So let's call the meeting to order, and I want to start by introducing a new member of the board, John Ruhwell. John served on the board previously, so he comes with experience. So John, welcome.
Thank you.
And we look forward to your input and your suggestions and comments.
Thank you.
We also have a new alternate member of the board, James Carse. There's a very good reason he's not here tonight. Yesterday, he and his wife were expecting their second child. I don't know whether that has occurred or not. But hopefully it has. He felt very bad that he was going to miss his first meeting, but hey, you know, that was a very legitimate explanation as to why he's not here. So we look forward to having him here next month. And just as a reminder, one thing that's bothered me when I used to run meetings in my other career, I'd like to limit the number of sidebar conversations with everybody. I find them very distracting. They're disrespectful to the person who happens to be speaking, so if we can minimize that, I'd certainly appreciate it. So with that, our first agenda item is review and/or questions on the minutes from our meeting in January. Does anybody have any questions about those? I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Second and all, favor.
Hi.
I guess, John, you can abstain.
Yes.
Since you weren't here, so we'll put you down as an abstention. So the minutes are approved. So our first item is Tuxedo Reserve West Terrace. Brad apparently is a bit under the weather tonight, so he's joining us via Zoom. Hope you're feeling better.
I think I'm turning the corner, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I've been home for almost a week now, so it's been it's been a frustrating week, but good to see you all. And yeah, so we're here tonight on West Terrace, so we understand that we have a the board has a resolution before you, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
So for the benefit of our new member and also as a refresher for all of us, I'd ask you to just give a brief description of what the West Terrace encompasses and what we'll be considering tonight.
Yeah, of course. Thank you very much. Mitch Looming with ONR, Vice President of Land. And for those of you that are keeping track, I can say this for fun, so I can tell my wife later. I was promoted a couple of weeks ago, so if you remember, my title was Director of Land Acquisition and Entitlements. Never really hold off the tongue. So anyway, so the guys at the office gave me a fancy title. So anyway, it's my first time actually rolling it out.
Congratulations, then your role will stay the same?
My job stays the same. Nothing changes. Nobody else reports to me.
Someone shoots.
That's a good promotion. It's not that impressive when you say that. All right, thank you, everybody. So tonight, we're talking about West Terrace. The first map is in overall of the entire community. Just to give you some perspective, of course, 17 is at the bottom. You would come up Quail Road, and then West Terrace is this largely able to the top right-hand corner here. Off to the back is Mountain Lake. That's not in play for the moment. This is West Terrace. And this is just a blow-up of West Terrace. So West Terrace is approximately, sorry. West Terrace is approximately eighteen and a half acres, 137 homes. And the homes consist of a section of single-family homes, 31 single-family homes, and a mix of two-story and three-story townhomes that flank the bottom left and upper sections. And again, if you remember from the overall map, if you kept going out off the top, get to the Mountain Lake section. This again is Quail Road, and as you take Quail Road, you move into the Commons, which is an application for another day to go through the homes there. So that's a quick overview of what we did at the last couple of meetings. Aside from giving everyone an orientation as to the homes and the roads and the engineering features, we went through some of the details of the architecture. As part of the application was also the architectural review process. So we presented the homes, and the board had some questions for us for some provisions they wanted us to take a look at. So we made some subtle changes to hopefully accommodate those concerns. John, do you want me to quickly go through the homes?
Yes, please.
All right, let's do that. So as said, there's three types of homes. This is the three-story townhome garage in front, and the townhomes are 24 foot wide. And then this is the the two-story townhome, again, 24 foot wide within this sorry, in a two-story configuration. And we show the back as three stories because the back of these townhomes create almost a walkout basement condition. So of course, that would market with that. And then the single-family homes are 40 foot wide, and they come in three different models. This is one of the models. And each of the model types has three different elevations. So which for our purposes gives us nine different elevation-style homes in the single-family section. And they range from 2,400 to 3,200 square feet. All four bedrooms to car garages, and we'll be wonderfully received in the market. So that's a quick overview of the homes. And I didn't go through, but there were some subtle changes made from our initial presentation to the final presentation some of the questions that the board had raised.
Okay, thank you, Mitch. Kelly has prepared a resolution for us to consider tonight, so if you want to.
Yes, I have a couple of revisions, which I will just read out. If anybody is following along, they're minor, but we want to bring them to attention. The first is actually in the title. So this is a preliminary and final major subdivision site plan and architectural review board approval. Then in the nature of the application, it is West Terrace will have a total of 137 housing units and 442 bedrooms. So the 216 that I got was actually only including the three three-story townhouses. So it's actually supposed to be 442 there.
What page is that on, Kelly?
Page one is the third line up from the bottom of nature of the application.
I see that.
I added them together and yet only put in.
So it's 400, how many?
442.
Okay, thanks.
On page nine, and under procedural history, just the last sentence in the first paragraph also notes preliminary and final subdivision site plan and architectural review board approval. And then there's a correction to, on page 10, the third paragraph, which I'll read out. It is the waiver that the applicant is requesting, and I'll explain the difference once I tell you what the new one is. So this paragraph should read, "The special permit requires CL-50-20-A road classifications to provide for no sidewalks along such road. The applicant proposes a six-foot wide sidewalk along one side of Upper Mountain Lake Road, where it is classified as a CL-50-20-A road. Consistent with footnote seven of the smart code table eight, the planning board has considered the accessibility, safety, and alternatives with this revision, and hereby waives the requirement for no sidewalk and approves a six-foot sidewalk along one side of Upper Mountain Lake Road, where it is classified as a CL-50-20-A road." Now, what had been there was a waiver from a six-foot sidewalk to a five-foot sidewalk. And if you were looking at your plans, and there was a colored image, and the roads were different colors, it was a small, the initial portion of Upper Mountain Lake Road was in purple. And on the later sheet, it actually noted that that was five feet instead of six feet. However, they inserted a condition where that gets corrected because that was a typo. This is actually applicable to that, the part of Upper Lake Road that is up further and heads out to whatever the next.
Kelly, do you want me to point that out?
That would be awesome.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's in green dots.
That is not easy to describe. So if you don't mind, we'll take the Florida part of Upper Upper Mountain Lake Road is here, and original, well, it has no homes on it, so the road designation did not require a sidewalk. But obviously, we thought that made better sense to create a better connectivity. So we added a sidewalk, which in the odd scenario, you add a sidewalk, you need a waiver. Usually, it's the other way around. You take away a sidewalk, you need a waiver. So we added the sidewalk, and then this lower part of Upper Mountain Lake Road is where we just had a flat-out typo and said it was five foot wide. It is in fact correctly 65. So that.
That is much easier with him pointing to the map than me describing colors that you may not remember.
We had to do all that homework to figure out how to convey it to you.
So that change is in that finding section. And then the following is "The planning board in its role as architectural review board has determined that the exterior of the proposed building designs and other project elements," new language, "as presented to the planning board by the applicant are consistent with the architectural and landscape design guidelines approved by the town board." In the first paragraph, there's a resolution of approval. It notes preliminary and final major subdivision. I will get back to, those are the revisions in the earlier part of the resolution. Does anybody have any questions on that part before I go into the specific conditions? Okay. So specific condition one, "This approval shall be subject to the special permit approval from the Town Tuxedo Town Board dated November 22, 2022, as amended from time to time, and the satisfaction of all applicable conditions that may be contained therein." Number two, "By this resolution, the planning board is not approving the Tuxedo Reserve onsite water and onsite sanitary sewer pump stations, construction project plans. These plans were submitted by the applicant for informational purposes." Number three, "Prior to signing of the plans, the applicant shall A) comply with the applicable comments contained in the memorandum of the town planner dated December 27, 2023, and January 15, 2024, to the satisfaction of the town planner; B) comply with the memorandum of the town engineer dated November 2, 2023, to the satisfaction of the town engineer; C) submit the plans to the town engineer for an engineering review of the plans. The plans shall not be signed until receipt of a letter from the town engineer indicating that the plans submitted for signature are in proper order and in compliance with this resolution; D) I'll read, but I'll get back to you. There's a potential condition regarding driveways on the same side. E) Submit confirmation of realty subdivision approval from the Orange County Department of Health; F) revise the plans to show all required easements." And there's a new G, which says revise sheet CS-111 to remove the note stating that there would be a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk. Number four, "In accordance with Article 26, Bonding of Improvements of the 2022 Special Permit, prior to the issuance of any building permit and prior to the commencement of construction or disturbance of the project site, the applicant shall post a security in an amount acceptable to the town and in a form acceptable to the town attorney to secure the completion of all off-site and onsite public improvements and onsite common area improvements required in connection with the work conditionally approved by this resolution for West Terrace and limited thereto." Number five, "It shall be the responsibility of the applicant to maintain the roadways, including removal of snow and ice, until such time as the roadway is accepted by the town as a public road or accepted as a private road by the homeowners association. In accordance with Article 23 of the 2022 Special Permit, prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for a residential unit, the applicant shall create the Tuxedo Reserve Homeowners Association." Number seven, "Prior to the issuance of any building permits for any structure, the applicant shall A) provide proof of filing the subdivision plat with the Orange County Clerk's Office to the Building Department; B) provide proof of filing all required easements, declarations, and/or licenses with the Orange County Clerk's Office to the town, which shall have been drafted to the satisfaction of the Planning Board Attorney, e.g. snow storage, drainage, stormwater access, amenities, open space conservation, etc. " Eight, "Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide a will serve letter from Orange and Rockland Utilities Incorporated. Nine, "Prior to the issuance of the 20th certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide and install an emergency access road at Mountain Road. Such emergency access road shall comply with the New York State Fire Code." Number 10, "The applicant shall comply with all mitigation measures outlined and set forth in the Town Tuxedo Planning Board involved agency finding statement dated January 12, 2023." Number 11, "Blasting is not proposed as part of this site plan approval. Should blasting be required for the development of West Terrace, the roadway blasting notes shown on the above-listed plans, as amended by this resolution, shall be followed." See article 10 of the 2022 Special Permit. Number 12 is a is the same, nevermind, I was going to change it, but I didn't. "Should the United States Postal Service require the applicant to provide a centralized mailbox building rather than individual curbside mailboxes, the applicant shall return to the planning board for further review." So I just want to go, that's all the specific conditions, so I just want to go back up to three D. There wasn't a determination made by the board regarding driveways on the same side. That was a discussion, so I left that in bold italics for you to determine what you'd like to do.
You addressed that at the last meeting, why it was practical. You want to go into that a little bit?
If you want.
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks. So as you can see, on the south or bottom side of the road as compared to the top side, the driveways stay on, I want to say, on one side of the road on the bottom because we want to keep the driveways uniformly on one side of the house. The reason we want to do that is it creates better yard separation between the homes as to where, as to as opposed to keeping the two driveways together. Also, in a perfect world, you're keeping the driveway on the high side of the grade, which I'm told from an engineering perspective is the better way to do it because if you put the driveway on the low side of the house, the low side of the grade, you need to add a retaining wall. But trying to have some diversity, you can see they're all on the high side going up, but coming down, we did try to make sure that they were on the other side, which does two things, creates a little bit of that diversity, but also it avoids as much as possible, not all the time, but driveways being right up back-to-back or in conflict, which I can speak to on a personal note. That's how my neighborhood is set up. Where in my habit, it just stinks when you're backing out of your neighborhood. It's the challenge too often. So they're on the high side going up, and then coming down, we forced them all to be on the downside by adding a few retaining walls where the graves needed them. But wherever we found that it was staying relatively flat, we kept the driver, we kept the driveways on the lower side so that we had some difference between one side of the road and the other. So it doesn't create that diversity that the board might have thought we could get by just switching up where the driveways are in different places. But we were able to switch it up on one side of the street versus the other to try to accommodate that concern.
So let me ask the board members if they have any questions about that or the resolution.
I'm good. I'm glad I'm able to do, you know, I can just picture it every day, so backing into somebody else, so.
John?
No, it looks good. I know that road and that location, and it's a bit of a uphill climb there, so it makes sense to move them to the upside. Look a lot nicer.
Yeah, and we also think it'll look great on the other side of the road. There's a half a dozen retaining walls here and there that we needed.
Breaks it all up to.
Right, so the retaining walls break it up a little bit, and then it allows us to keep the driveways on technically the lower side. But uniformly on the lower side, so the driveways aren't neighbor-to-neighbor next to each other. A little bit more complicated and thought than we thought we needed to get to on the driveways, but I think we worked it out.
Bill, you okay?
I have a question about the community stairs. Is that out?
Yeah, we have not put them back in. As we said, our initial concern was the utility of the stairs and the usual effect of the stairs along that mountain edge, the rock edge. So it is our preference not to include the stairs.
I'm good.
No, no questions or comments.
Sean, you have any comments about any of this?
No, Mr. Chairman. I filed a report with the board back in November, and I did provide Kelly with some comments prior to the draft resolution, which were incorporated this evening.
So Kelly, you're clear as to what you have to incorporate now on this driveway?
Yeah, I think I just take out that because I think you're in agreement with what was presented. I forgot to mention, I also included one additional general condition because I included the timeframe for expiration for site plan, but I didn't include timeframe for subdivisions. So that is also included as your typical general condition for subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Bill, as Valerie's substitute for tonight, you're any, our planner?
Nope. It's noting that the comments are comments in the two previous memos are incorporated, will be incorporated. And they, almost all of them, all of them refer to plants and species on the planting lists and making sure that the species are listed are of the approved list, so that'll be incorporated to the resolutions.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Appreciate it. Okay, if there's nothing else on this, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Have a second. All in favor? Anyone opposed?
No.
Do you have that? Okay, resolution is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing, my favorite question. Any update on ONR?
Adam is the head of our construction for the Tuxedo Reserve community, and he's been in direct communication with the ONR folks. So I'm stealing all your time here. Go ahead.
So yes, we had, we had our project kickoff meeting with Orange and Rockland. They had probably 24 designers and engineers in the room. It was pretty intimidating. But they are, if we are able to maintain under 10 megawatts, which our electrical engineer did the calculations, we are over the 10 megawatts. They do not need a substation. They may be able to do some minor improvements to the existing substation. And I'm still working on the will serve letter. They are also able to supply the community with natural gas.
The 10 megawatts is full build-out?
Yeah.
Everything?
Yeah, we gave them the entire site.
Does that include charge stations for people that everybody wants?
For all the charge stations, the and that number's actually going to improve since we're going to be doing the natural gas.
But 10 megawatts is with electric heating for.
One at a time, please, or we're going to miss both of you. Go ahead.
Saying he said 10 megawatts is that that's an all-electric number?
That's an all-electric number.
So he had the gas come down.
Yeah, that number's going to come down.
So that accommodates electric heating in all areas?
That does. So we, when we had our initial proposal to Orange and Rockland, we had sent that first-case scenario with being all-electric. Heat pumps, electric water heaters, EV chargers, even, you know, EV chargers, superchargers in the Commons area. We've given them everything from beginning to the end. So now that we have the gas confirmation, we are going to revise our submittal to them with the load counts for the gas as well as revised electric, so it's actually going to be less stressful for them. I don't know what a megawatt is, but it seems like a lot.
So the decision's been made to supply gas to the facility?
Yes. And they also said if they did need to do a substation, it would not be on the Tuxedo property.
A megawatt is a million watts. But where would the substation be? Did it give you any indication?
They didn't. They said it would be off our site though.
Isn't there, isn't there a substation in Hillburn?
Yes, a very large one, in fact.
Isn't that the closest? I can't place any other one.
It's the only one in the region that I know of, unless you go up to Monroe. There's a substation up there, but the one down in Slotsberg or south of Slotsberg is very large, very large substation.
So gas is going to be used for heating?
Yes.
And stoves?
I guess hot water heaters.
Hot water, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know the 2026 governor said building with electric. But if you guys start a construction project that needs gas, you can finish your project?
That is the, that is the purpose of our will serve. So if we were to get a will serve on just one of the sections in the community, we are going to be getting a will serve on the entire development, which which can, you know, enables us to bring everything in.
There's no specific time when they would issue that?
I had another, I'm sorry, I had another conversation with Jackie Frostville today. She says it's a little bit above her pay grade, but she has got it in process, so they're going to be given until shortly after.
Okay, so it doesn't seem like it's going to be a problem?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, if there's nothing else for Tuxedo Reserve, you guys are
Free to go.
Free to go.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. You too. Thanks.
Deborah, thank you for setting this up.
Anytime.
Feel better, Brad?
Thank you, everyone.
Take care. Okay, our second and final item is the extension of an approval that we granted five months or so ago for Skyview Skylights. So if you could give us a brief summary of where you are, what the project is about, again, for the benefit of our new member, and also where you are and some of the conditions that, no, that's fine.
Hi, I'm Ashley O'Herbert, and I'm the project manager of this project. So not much has changed, but broker engineering followed up with all the different organizations to get all the right information and approvals, and they've been corresponding. And we finally submitted, I mean, broker engineering finally submitted the final site plan, and now we're working on getting the architectures completed. That's where we're at.
Could I just, forgive me, I'm new on this one here. Is this that building on the stilts, sort of, that one on, I mean?
It's at the bottom of Long Meadow on Stilt.
It's been there forever, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I call it on stilts.
And that, that facility is going to be demolished.
Oh, that'll be good. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
This'll be from scratch.
Tried about 100 times to resurface that thing, so enough of that.
Have you guys figured out what you do with the underground detention system? We couldn't figure out as of now. They were funded one month ago, so we may have to call off some of the channels. The building currently is here.
Oh, that's the existing building in the
No, no, that's the
The Alpine.
This, this one is this is Sterling Monroe.
Okay, all right, I got it now, yep.
Yeah, and this is the new building. Trial parking.
Do you have the rendering of the building? Let me just bring it a little closer again. I feel, thank you.
Oh, yeah, yep.
I can't wait to see it.
It's nice.
Much less.
Much less.
So what it is, um, the site will be like, uh, a concrete, uh, it's that old concrete building square. Uh, rep and, uh, square, and in front we have four like this, covering the whole building with, uh, two floors, two third building in the front. And that will last for. And currently we are through the, the site plan from the Danish. And waiting for approvals, and we're working right now for the catch laws.
I, I hope there's a skylight in the building.
Too many skylights.
Yeah. You're making them.
So.
It's very nice.
So you alluded to the underground retention, that still is, uh, an open item?
The underground, there is, uh, we, we painted all the bushes and the trees over there. Found over there a lot of cat bases and hot stuff we hadn't seen before. So they're opening up the whole thing, why is it, is it, can, can it be used or has it been demolished? Is it, is it in the way? So what we and him went down with the, they saw it and trying to find out rather where the magic comes from. Where the end, where's the beginning, what was the purpose of this one? So trying to figure that one out. It's all over.
Have, have you been involved in this, Sean, at all?
No, I haven't, but if, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, generally the size of, uh, underground and even above ground retention systems are based on the amount of impervious cover. You can see from the site plan that it's gonna have a lot more impervious cover, so if anything, I would say that they would have to add on to what they have if they look to reuse it, otherwise they'd have to replace it.
And then there was an issue with the well location, has that been resolved?
So the well, the well is way above over here in the town, and it looks like that it'd be taken off with a mountain over there, be removed, and the well will come along with it. It's in the way.
Now, that'll have to be approved by the health department, which I think we have in the resolution already, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, nothing is up for approval tonight, because it's been approved already. What we, uh, are considering tonight is an extension of those approvals. And the reason for that is, on the, um, the special use permit. If the construction is not completed within eighteen months, you need an extension. And if the, um, building permit has not been issued, you also need an extension. And while you're not quite there yet, and there's a, uh, building permit issued. That's why we have to issue or consider issuing a six month extension.
Question is, if we can't get a longer extension, the six month, because I see it taking much longer than I anticipated.
We can, on the first item, on the special permit, we can extend it one more time, is that true?
Yeah, after, after that, there's.
After the six months, so basically you'd have another year on that one. The site plan, it can be, uh, extended two more times. So essentially you have eighteen months. And then it's to our discretion if we, if, if he absolutely needs another one, or?
Uh, I'd have to check the way your code is written, but I wouldn't get, I know that they are moving forward, sometimes the outside agencies do take a long time. Um, just from the legal update, if the board remembers, there's a buffer that you wanted an easement on the one side. They are working on that, I've had correspondence with their attorney on that, um, and with Deborah as well, so. They are moving forward, I would say you usually like a, a check in in about six months, but it's up to you.
Well, let's do the, do the check in.
So I have that to your August sixth, twenty twenty four meeting.
And, uh, we didn't ask you, nor have you prepared a, a resolution for this yet.
You don't need a resolution for just the extension, it's just by motion.
Okay, okay. So I'll, uh. Does anybody on the board have any questions about any of this?
Just, just as a catch up thing, like I said, I haven't been very involved, but based on the, the road going in and out and the new apartments and the new building going on there. What's your anticipated amount of employees that'll be parking every day and like a tractor trailers coming in and out with? Or trucks coming, you know, with, carrying a skylight with them?
So the in and out, it usually occurs in the beginning in the morning. And afternoon, if the dirty day, it's.
That's when everybody else is going in.
That, uh, miscellaneous, uh, tractor trailers, if not tractor trailers, about at all, it's all project.
Okay.
Uh, the, the max of truck, it was, is tow trucks, usually leave in the morning. I told it the night before and then I'm leaving. Um, amount of people that I think this very, it's one part of the training.
Okay. I was just looking at the, the load of traffic there, that's all.
Oh. Big stuff and not too much volume.
Yeah.
It's not like.
It's okay.
Million little things.
Yeah. Cool, I just, we're trying to catch up.
Anybody else have questions about this? Right, no?
No.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, grant these, this extension.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, one.
Six month ones?
This'll be six months. Um, one thing I'll, I'll just mention, you're free at any time to apply for a demolition permit. I think we've mentioned that. I think they've mentioned that at other.
Really?
We will take it down, we had a lot of work over there, so combines roofs, but in fact, it's the biggest, which, which way they were best. We were thinking the biggest part, the hand, a big part and the salvage, the big beams over there. Um, inside is pretty empty. It's just a shop, but there's not much over there, looks, you remind us on the outside, but inside is empty and there's nothing in there.
Those scrolls, like exposed beams and it's not covering it, but those, it's covered by the roof, so it's not getting ruined, but it's just a.
Now, if, um, before that demolition permit can be issued, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. Uh, we have to have proof of no asbestos, no lead paint? Have they done an asbestos survey yet? You're aware you have to.
There's no paint over there, paint at all, the building has not been.
Okay.
There's no pipe.
Well, but there's typically, uh, asbestos in the mastic used in, uh, seal, on roofs, uh, tarred roofs and stuff, so. I'm just saying, you, you, you probably should just have an asbestos inspection before you.
I think that the asbestos issue is more a nice seventy eight.
You're talking, you're thinking lead, you know, we're talking two different things here, we're talking lead, paint, lead pipes and asbestos.
I don't mind with all companies, they, they, they think it's inspect, but the building has no paint at all inside, it's raw, it's brown. Fourth ground, second floor is concrete.
I know, but a lot of times even in window installation, in caulking around on the roof and stuff like that, the mastic still today is asbestos is used as a.
Oh, really?
As a.
Yes.
Part of the, that, so that's why I would just say, just, it's simple to have a guy go and just do a, a phase one asbestos walk through, just tell you what, if you have it or not.
But Chris, you're, you're gonna require that, right?
Yes.
That, that there's a certificate from a, a licensed asbestos firm that there is no asbestos. And if there is, that has to be removed before you can do a general demo. And, you know, I agree with, I agree with what John said, that in mastics, are there any windows in there?
Yes, so the, the caulking.
Well, exactly.
Occasionally, so I'm just, listen, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, so in case you wanna just have a check now. And Chris, you'd probably, uh, require that anyway, so in your permitting.
No, that's the valid point about these mastics, adhesives and so on, can have asbestos in it, so.
Maybe just, uh.
Yeah. That's easy, that, uh, that's mine. I think that's, uh. I think that was, uh, was hardly sweet, are they grown to work on this? Space nice. The, so they have passed, trying to get out of them also.
Okay. So your extension is approved and, uh. Hopefully we'll see some, uh, some action down there pretty soon.
Yes.
I'm sure you're, you wanna get it done too, so. Okay, with that, there's, uh, there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I don't think anybody objects.
No.
Okay, thanks, everybody.